Well, we're waiting to get ourselves started. We have our state senator here, and he's going to say, "We're limiting everyone to three minutes," so we're going to give him two minutes.[14.63][14.63](Laughter).[15.63][15.63](Applause). Bruce Tar.[18.55][18.55](Applause).
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to the members of Town Meeting. I would say that two minutes is awfully short, and time is in the eye of the beholder, so I will interpret it appropriately. I just, first of all, want to thank everyone for coming out on a dismal, gray, rainy, wet Saturday morning to make important decisions on behalf of the town. You know, this has been a trying time for all of us to deal with the pandemic that we face, but it is a good sign for our democracy that you still come out, you're still willing to make decisions, and you're still willing to spend your time guiding the future of this community. So a very, very big thank you to everyone, including our clerks, our selectmen, the Finance Committee, you, Mr. Moderator, everyone for pitching in and making this work under this big tent, which in many ways is a metaphor for the fact that we are all in this community together. I want to give you just a brief update on what's happening on Beacon Hill and remind everyone that we, right now, are still able to meet in a formal legislative session. That would normally not be the case. Generally, formal legislative sessions end in the second year of the biennial session in July, at the end of July. We have extended that time period for several reasons, but the most important is that we lost so much time being able to meet in formal sessions due to the pandemic and the requirements of social distancing. We have now overcome that, and we've devised a way that we can meet remotely or in our chambers, depending on what people feel comfortable with as members of the legislature. Now, I think the most important thing to update you on about today, and I think I'm probably at about one and a half minutes, right, Mr. Moderator? The most important thing is the state budget. Now, when you last gathered, there was a lot of uncertainty about the state budget, and Representative Hill and I were urging great caution. We have since had an update, in fact, the update happened last week, about what we could expect in terms of a revenue shortfall for our current fiscal year, and it's important to understand that we are in fiscal year 2021, which actually began on July 1st. And the most recent estimate is that we could have a roughly $2 to $5 billion shortfall, and that's estimated by our Department of Revenue. So we've been waiting to pass a final budget for the remainder of the year. We did two supplemental budgets, one for one month and one for three months, so we could keep going and meet our commitments and our obligations. We do have to, soon, develop a budget for the remainder of the fiscal year. Honestly, we've been waiting for two things: one, to see if the federal government would pass another stimulus package that would help us; and, second, to understand the ramifications of lower tax collections, and right now, we're about $700 million below the benchmark that we had set for ourselves. So in order to get the process moving, Governor Baker, this past week, filed a revised budget to get the process started, and that budget projects approximately a $3.5 billion shortfall and balances the budget using several tools, including a $1.35 billion withdrawal from the stabilization fund, which leaves us with still over $2 billion in the stabilization fund, and so 2.1, 2.2. Now, here's the most important thing, I think, for the discussions today and in the foreseeable future. That budget meets its commitment that was made by the House and Senate Chairs of Ways and Means and the Secretary of Administration and Finance to level fund local aid and level fund Chapter 70 with an inflationary adjustment, because if you don't adjust Chapter 70 for inflation, you actually violate the law. Now, in order to meet those commitments, we're going to have to make some other difficult decisions, but another hallmark of the budget that the governor filed is that it does not change or cut eligibility for our social service and human service programs, including mass health, where we've had a tremendous uptick in the number of cases because of people that need that insurance because of what's happened during the pandemic. My expectation is that we will, as the House and Senate, debate the governor's proposal and our own proposals in the very near future, and we will likely have a budget by the end of November. We had been hoping for October, but it would likely happen by the end of November. As we do that, Representative Hill and I will continue to work to maintain local spending and local aid as a priority, as we always have. We know that you're doing your part to be able to balance the town's budget and maintain a good financial position. We will do our best to do our part to be good state partners in that endeavor. That being said, Mr. Moderator, I think I'm at 2 minutes 59 seconds, so I'll stop here, but again, want to thank everyone, and thanks for the honor of serving you in the Massachusetts State Senate. I hope Town Meeting goes well. Thank you very much.[360.15][360.15](Applause).
Okay, well, I guess we're ready to get started. So welcome, and thank you for coming to Wyndham's 2020 special Town Meeting. In an effort to expedite the July meeting, the Board of Selectmen worked with the Finance Committee to identify articles that were financial priorities. The first half of the articles were completed in July, and now we've returned to complete the balance of the articles to be voted on by the town in 2020. We've done everything we possibly can to shorten the usual opening remarks, and aside from a few items of business, we're just going to get right into the voting. One first for Wyndham is we're going to vote, we're going to try to vote, with electronic voting today. We'll go through a series of sample questions to familiarize everyone with how they will be used, and in the event that any problems arise with this method of voting, we will immediately revert back to our former way of voting. And if that were the case, and although this is unlikely as well, but if voters are not in the designated voting area, if they want to stand out in the rain, we will not be counting them if we revert to the old style of voting. So we want everybody to stay, as they say, under the tent. My next comments procedural relate directly to my standing here today. Over the years, I've served as interim moderator when the need arose. The Board of Selectmen has identified two qualifications for an interim town moderator. First, I had to be available for a pre-meeting, and the second was that I do not intend to run for town moderator. So I'm the lucky person today, and I've served multiple times as town moderator, and therefore I've got a little bit of a head start in terms of preparing for today's meeting. We did have a Zoom meeting where we discussed the logistics relative to today's meeting. I consulted with Town Administration, the Finance Committee Chair, and current Town Council, so hopefully, things will go smoothly. But from a procedural standpoint, I would ask the town clerk, Diane Buco, to make a nomination to elect me as temporary moderator today.
So moved.
And...
Second.
Hearing no other nominations, I had asked the town clerk, Diane Buco, for a motion to close these nominations.
So moved.
Seconded.
And now I'd asked the chairman of the board to cast the sole vote. You don't have to vote on this, but the chairman of the board, Gary Cheeseman...
As authorized, I cast my sole vote for, sorry, for Tony Ferri to be the interim moderator for this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so that's taken care of. So as your temporary town moderator, I ask your patience, and we'll proceed now with the business of the day. I might add that as interim town moderator, I would encourage anyone who, everyone who's interested in running for the job of town moderator next May, please to speak to me, to speak to Diane, and to take out the necessary papers in order to do that. It's a wonderful job. It gets you involved within the town one or two days a year. I want to say some thank yous to the election tellers and warden for running the check-in and assisting, if necessary, us with any votes. A thank you to town staff to help to organize a safe town meeting. This is our second tent. I'm hoping that we won't have a third tent next May, but we'll wait and see. I'd like to also thank our town administrator, executive assistant to the town administrator, interim finance director, Director of Administrative Services, the Board of Selectmen, and Finance and Advisory Committee, for the time and attention they've put into preparing for this day and making our job, mine and yours, much easier. Very much appreciated. The town's bylaws require that we have a quorum of 120 registered voters. The Board of Selectmen followed a protocol set by the state to reduce the quorum today to 90, and I've been advised by our town clerk that we have 90, and so I now call the special town meeting to order, and we'll omit the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. Now, a brief tutorial and test vote for the new electronic voting devices. Once I open the vote for each article, you will press the green button to vote yes, the red button to vote no, and if you choose, the yellow button to abstain. The LED screen on your remote will indicate an okay when your vote has been recorded, and you'll be able to change your vote, if you wish, until the point when I announce that the vote has been closed on a particular article. Individual votes will be projected onto this screen in front by last name, so it'll be identical to your holding a piece of paper or standing up. It's just done, hopefully, to speed up the process. Couple of other little things. If you do approach the microphone to speak or leave your seat for any other reason, you must take your remote with you. You may not hand your remote to another voter to hold, and you certainly may not ask another voter to vote for you by using your remote. And just don't leave your remote unattended. I don't think that's much of an ask. So let's try a couple of sample questions, and then we'll get right to the articles. Sample question one: Is chocolate ice cream your favorite flavor? Yes, no, or abstain?[760.19][760.19](Audio of a telephone dialing) Huh? Is this going to be brought up?[776.31][776.31](Audio of a telephone dialing) I seem to be missing page six, Diane. I'm missing page... Let me just borrow your book for one. Sorry about that. Sample question number two: Are the New England Patriots going to win the Super Bowl this year, or I guess next year? Yes, no, or abstain? So now lock in your votes. Doesn't look good for the Patriots.[838.69][838.69](Laughter). And the final question: Are we ready to move forward with the articles at this point? Please vote: yes, no, or I suppose you could abstain?[855.75][855.75](Laughter). I think we're ready to go forward. Okay, some brief introductions. In addition to myself, to my left, we have Town Council Jonathan Silverstein of KP Law, Town Administrator Anthony Ansaldi, and the Board of Selectmen Chair Gary Cheeseman, and we have Jack Wilhelm and John Clemenza. And to my right, we have Diane Buco, and we have the Finance and Advisory Committee Chair Jim Purdy, and members, I believe, we've got Alex Began and...
Susan Malin.
Susan Malin. I guess Carrie is not here, and David is here, David Politano. And they are joined by Jackie Bresnahan, the fearless Director of Administrative Services here in the town of Wyndham. Also today in attendance is our former Town Council and Town Moderator Paul Weaver, and he is here. He's come down from, yes.[941.62][941.62](Applause). I think Paul was Town Council for four decades and Town Moderator for three decades and my friend for five decades, so. So Paul will talk briefly about some, a decade of work on some bylaw changes. I'm going to turn the microphone over briefly to Select Board Chairman Cheeseman for a few announcements.
Thank you very much. So just a few announcements and then one very special proclamation coming here. All the announcement material you can check out on the town website. So first off, this afternoon, starting at 2 o'clock, you'll be able to early vote at the Town Hall. That runs through the 30th of October, and if you don't vote early, then you can vote at Buecher School on regular election day on 3 November. So exact hours each day, check the website. Second thing, amidst the pandemic, we still have holidays coming up, including Halloween, so we're going to Halloween 5 to 8. If you want to bow out, then just leave the porch lights out, and I would refer all parents, please look at the town website. There is suggested safer options than just trick-or-treat other activities you can do with your children, but let's be smart and be safe on Halloween. As voted at previous town meeting, we no longer have the big leaf pickup, but instead, we have bagged leaf pickup, and that will occur on Saturday, the 21st of November, and then again Saturday, the 5th of December. So those leaves have to be either in barrels or bagged up. They'll be picked up, but if they're just loose, they'll be sitting there, and you'll need to clean them up. Also, we have, starting at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting on Tuesday, the 20th, there'll be a public comment period reinstituted. We'll be looking for your comments and solutions and ideas. Following on to that, one solution that we need to suggest it here is, we still, three and a half months into this year, we still have 22 vacancies on board and committee seats. And that's the, brings up the announcements, and now, talking about volunteers, I'd like to read a proclamation here, invite Lenny Toonberg to come on up. So a proclamation: It is hereby known to all that the Wyndham Board of Selectmen offers its sincere thanks to Leonard K. Toonberg, whereas Leonard K. Toonberg faithfully served the Wyndham Fire Department for 35 years, and as Leonard Toonberg played a key role as a primary daytime responder and successfully fulfilled his role, whether pumping the trucks, operating the ladders, or entering structured fires on a hand line without complaint, and whereas Lenny Toonberg provided an example of commitment and dedication to all fighters and to all citizens in that town, and that Lenny Toonberg worked to ensure the safety of the fire ground and the residents of Wyndham, and now therefore be resolved that the Wyndham Board of Selectmen extend its sincere thanks to Mr. Toonberg's dedication service, and once thereof, we sign the sheet. I'd ask everyone to have a quick standing round of applause for Lenny.[1161.14][1161.14](Applause). There you go. All right. Do you want to say anything? All right.[1175.14][1175.14](Applause).
I just want to say thank you to the citizens of the town of Wyndham. It's been a great honor to serve this wonderful town, which I have seen change tremendously over the last 35 years, and it's been an honor and a privilege to work here.
Now, as is our practice, as we're about to begin the voting on articles, will all residents who can please rise for the pledge of allegiance and its promise of liberty and justice for all? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The conduct of our meeting is governed by the rules of Town Meeting Time, a special set of parliamentary procedures developed by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. My responsibilities today include presiding over and regulating proceedings, deciding questions of order, declaring votes, and granting leave to address the meeting. To ensure that we've got an orderly meeting and that people who want to speak are able to do so, permission of the moderator is required to address the meeting. If you wish to speak, please come to one of the microphones that we've got set out in the middle of the tent here, socially distanced, to be recognized, and when you're recognized, state your name, street address, and there'll be approximately a three-minute speaking maximum per resident, per article. At this meeting, the town clerk's role is to keep the official record of all motions made and to correct me if I make any mistakes. In the event that we need a count, we'll do a vote by hand. The warrant before us today presents nine articles, including two citizens petitions. Articles one and two utilize free cash and water funds respectively for capital projects outlined in the warrant book. Articles three and four, that Paul Weaver will speak to, seek to recodify and update the formatting only of the town's general and zoning bylaws. Articles five and six seek the adoption of two local taxes that would provide some modest revenue for the town. Article seven would allow for an easement on town property owned by the Conservation Commission and will require a two-thirds majority vote, as will Article four. Articles eight and nine are both citizens petitions, and I'll call on the petitioners when we get to these articles to make a short presentation on their subject matter. Please note the inclusion in the warrant book of commentary on each article, and the purpose of the commentaries is to give you some idea about which article does, which, what each article does and why it's on the warrant. And in each case, I'll also provide a brief summary of the article and then ask for a motion. So, I think we're ready to go, and Article one, the use of free cash. Very briefly, the annual operating budget for the town for fiscal year 2021 was approved at the town meeting on July 11, with the use of free cash to subsidize operating revenues. This article seeks to use additional free cash for capital projects that would not have come before the town meeting in April had, that would have come before the town meeting in April had COVID-19 not come before the town meeting. So, these are the items that are going, that money would be spent on out of free cash, and I will entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash such sums of money to fund the town's fiscal 2021 capital improvements program, including the acquisition, equipping, and all other incidental and related costs of items A through J in the amounts and for the purposes as printed in the warrant. And I think...
So moved.
And who's going to speak on this? Jim?
If there's any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them. Sure.
Seeing no indication that there are questions, are we ready to vote? I believe that we need a second. We've had seconded. Once again, with your clickers, all of those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Abstain, press the yellow button. We'll take a half, about a half a minute to, or less. So we will close the vote in 10 seconds. Article one has passed. Article two, transfer from water surplus for water-related supervisory control and data acquisition hardware and software. Here, I will entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 from water surplus for the purchase of supervisory control and data acquisition hardware and software to be used for monitoring the town's water systems, including all incidental and related expenses. Provided further, however, that if such amounts have not been fully expended by June 30, 2021, the balance of such appropriation shall close and shall be returned to the Water Capital Reserve account.
So moved.
Are there questions? So I'll, is there a second for that motion? And we did have a second, so we're ready to vote. All those in favor, use your devices to vote yes, no, or abstain. We'll close the voting in five seconds. The voting is closed, and Article two passes. I also understand that our representative Brad Hill is here now. At least a wave to the crowd, okay?[1643.83][1643.83](Applause). Exceedingly eloquent. Thank you. Article three, general bylaw amendment, recodification. Now, this is where Paul Weaver will be speaking to us. We'll begin this article by making the motion. Once the motion has been made, I'll invite Paul Weaver, former Town Council, to the podium to make a brief presentation to the meeting on both this article and Article four, although we will vote on them separately, providing there's no objection to him addressing the town meeting as a non-resident of the town. And seeing none, that's the way we will proceed. So I will entertain a motion that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by making ministerial clerical amendments and grammatical corrections thereto, including a recodification and recaptioning of the complete general bylaws, and further to amend the general bylaws to make certain substantive amendments. All is set forth in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Wyndham dated January 2020, as on file with the town clerk. Provided, however, that all bylaws currently in force and not included in the code shall be repealed, and such repeal shall not apply to or affect any personnel bylaw. So... Is it so moved?
So moved.
Okay. The chair recognizes Paul Weaver. Can you, and Paul will be also talking about Article four, which is also a bylaw update.
Thank you, Tony. I feel a little bit like the ghost of town meetings past appearing here, but it's great to be back in Wyndham. With respect to the difference between three and four, this is all one bylaw, but because it includes a restatement of the zoning bylaws as they exist, and because state law requires that be by two-thirds vote, whereas a regular bylaw amendment can be by majority, we split it into two. But this is all one package. Around 2010, anticipating my forthcoming retirement... Around 2010, anticipating my forthcoming retirement from, as it were, 40 years of service to the town, I began to look at passing on whatever wisdom I had acquired about how Wenham's town government works. This article is the culmination of nearly 10 years' long project to that end. As a newly minted young lawyer and new resident of Wenham, I was recruited to serve as the town council and handed the then newly minted 1978 legal base study created by a town government study committee based on a 1973 compilation of the town laws. It set forth in one place the powers, duties, and membership requirements for every elected and appointed town office and board. It was like the operating manual for your car, a source of answers about how our town worked. For many years, referring to the legal base study was all I needed to do to advise the town on its governance rules. Want to know about the Office of Fence Viewer? It's all there on page 25. My retirement project was to bring that reference document into the 21st century. By that time, the process of governing the town had been radically transformed and made much more complex. That original legal base study was, in many important respects, obsolete. On top of Wenham's Gordian knot of historic bylaws, some going back to the 17th and 18th centuries, had been added layer after layer of newer amended bylaws. Innumerable new federal and state laws and regulations had been imposed upon the town. The newly created position of town administrator introduced new questions about which authority resided in which of the selectmen, the independent elected offices and boards, and the town administrator. Increasingly, I couldn't find answers to these questions, either in my reliable legal base study, or even with the assistance of the foremost legal authorities on Massachusetts town governance. So in 2012, the selectmen at my request appointed a new town government study committee to work with me to update the bylaws and address the heretofore undefined relationship of independently elected boards to the selectmen and the town administrator. The result of this work by that committee and the then selectmen was a new bylaw that clarified the authorities of the selectmen, the several independent elected boards and officers, and the town administrator. It was submitted to the voters as Article 16 in the 2016 annual town meeting and approved. Passage of that article completed the essential recompilation of almost 40 years of changes in the town's governance. As the 1978 legal base study followed the 1973 recompilation, the 2016 bylaw provided the basis to create a new updated legal base study with an eye to consolidating all the new rules in, again, in one place, a new operating manual to leave to the next generation of Wenham leadership. With the support of the selectmen and invaluable assistance from Wenham resident Melanie Giaccoloni, the legal base study was revised, updated, corrected, and given to the town clerk to be put up on the town website. Visionary that she is, Diane saw at once that for this new legal base study to be useful for both citizens and town staff in a digital electronic future, it needed to be more than a booklet based on the draft pamphlet I had produced. To be a useful guide and reference tool, it had to be current, updatable as laws changed, and searchable to efficiently find answers to specific questions. Diane located a company called General Code, whose business is providing a platform for electronic versions of town charters. The selectmen hired General Code to transform my draft into such a tool and asked Diane, Margaret Hoffman, Jackie Bresnahan, and myself, along with the town administrator ex officio, to act as a team to coordinate and oversee the work by General Code and ensure that the new code would be true to the Wenham way. For a variety of reasons, including more urgent projects and allowing new town council to review the General Code work, this was a slow process, but the result is very good and well worth the wait. As presented on the General Code platform, our bylaws are not changed in substance, but have a new look and format that transformed them into a strikingly modern and different reference tool. I find it incredibly inviting and easy to use. As is made clear in the commentary to this article, adoption of the new Wenham code does not itself change the rules as they exist today. It is rather like replacing documents written in old English that no one now can speak or read, with the same content presented in modern English on a state-of-the-art electronic platform that makes it easily accessible to all, easy to update as changes occur at future town meetings, all by the touch of a button and not a 10-year-long push by me or anyone else. I hope you will see the value of this procedural final step and approve Article three and then Article four. Thank you very much for your attention.
So, we're going to vote on each of these articles separately. Article four is the zoning bylaw. Article three is everything else in the bylaws. Are there questions for Paul or others about Article three? Please identify yourself and your street address.
Chuck Locus in Eight Friend Court. Thank you for the additional information. Sounds like there's going to be all this information kind of in the cloud somewhere. I'm just wondering if there's a backup process for this data?
Well, I think the question is, is there a backup for this data?
If you mean for the General Code, Diane will correct me because she's the coordinator with General Code, but General Code's business is to back this stuff up for many towns across the country, and we will be paying an annual license fee to them to maintain this record so that all Diane has to do is send any rule changes in the future to them, and bing, they'll be posted and they'll be live on the town website. So, I don't personally know what their backup plans are, but our backup plan is them.
Thank you.
And the gentleman in front, please identify yourself and your address.
Good morning. Roger Smarage, 7 Onion River Road. The warrant indicates that there are substantive changes being made, but the presentation we just heard says there's not. I was wondering if you could address that inconsistency?
And probably Jackie would come to my assistance if necessary, but, and I think there is a list of nuances. This was a difficult process for the original committee and certainly for our committee that oversaw the General Code project. There were different words for the same thing in different places. We had to decide one word. We renumbered things. We had to look at whether wording changes or format changes substantively affected what was there. Our conclusion was there wasn't anything that made a material difference to the thing. It was, in our good faith effort, best effort to give you the same thing that you had, as I said, simply translate it into a new form. An advantage of getting onto this platform is that everything is now organized and integrated. And what that means is if anything in the laws that you probably couldn't even understand before comes, now it says, oh my God, is that true? I don't like that. Well, that becomes easy to come back to the town, propose a change. Either it'll happen from the selectmen or you'll do a taxpayer petition, but it becomes easy to do it, and again, it will be instantly available. Everybody will always be working from the same rules. So, the, I think we felt it was more important to get to a manageable platform going forward than to worry about whether this word is exactly the same meaning as that word. But we did our best to make that the case.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, we're ready to vote. I think we did get a second, but let's just make sure. Did we get a second on Article three? So we're ready to vote. So, let the voting begin. Red buttons, green buttons, or yellow buttons? So I'll close the voting in 10 seconds. The voting is closed. And the vote passes. Now, Article four, which is really part of the same work, I will entertain a motion that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by making, as I said before, ministerial clerical amendments and grammatical corrections thereto, including a recodification and recaptioning of the complete zoning bylaw, and further to amend the zoning bylaw to make certain substantive amendments. All is set forth in chapter 255 of the final draft of the Code of the Town of Wenham dated January 20, 20, January 2020 as on file with the town clerk. Provided, however, that all zoning bylaws currently in force and not included in the code shall be repealed. So, thank you very much. And a second. Are there questions or comments? And this is, we will require a two-thirds vote, so this will come in handy. Please identify yourself.
I'm Ann Weeks. I'm the chairman of the planning board, and I wanted to confirm that we spent considerable time working through these in anticipating the question that may be asked, as was asked before. There are no substantive changes here. These are all clerical and bringing us into the 21st century, so you can search our zoning code. I'm here for questions if you have any. The planning board voted five to zero in favor of this article.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions? And seeing none, I think we're ready to vote. Now, again, this is a two-thirds vote, and so I'd like you now, please, all to vote on Article four. And I'll close the voting in 10 seconds. The voting is closed. And that article passes. Article five, local adoption of a meal tax, meal excise tax. I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, authorizing the imposition of a local excise tax in the statutory amount of 0.75% on the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town. So moved. Are there questions about this? Again, it's to raise a modest amount of additional revenue for the town, as I mentioned. Seeing no quest, seeing, wait a minute. Seeing no questions, we're ready to vote. Do we have a second? Thank you very much. So please take your devices and vote now. And this, again, is a majority vote. And we'll close the voting in 10 seconds. The voting is closed. The article has passed. Article six, I will entertain a motion that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, 64G, Section 3A, authorizing the imposition of a local excise tax on the rental of rooms in hotels, motels, lodging houses, and bed and breakfast establishments within the town, and further to set that local excise at 6%. So moved. Yeah, we need, we need Article six up on the screen. Thank you. Are there questions or comments? The gentleman in the back or the middle?
Tom Lancaster, 166 Larch Row. It's more of just a clarification than a question. I can't think of too many establishments in the town of Wenham that would generate any kind of revenue from this. Can someone just comment on the expected revenue if this was passed?
The, this is a modest tax that moves the current tax rate from 5.7% to 6%. The town of Wenham will receive 30 cents on every $100. It is not a burden to the community and any kind of administrative cost. It is established by the State Revenue Commission, and the State Revenue Commission quarterly passes the, whatever revenue is engendered from this back to the town of Wenham. We have not projected any revenues at this point. It's pretty modest, given the number of BMBs and hotels and motels in the town of Wenham. On Article five, the anticipated revenue, by the way, is 15, approximately $15,000.
If there are no other questions or comments, we're ready to vote. So, take out your devices and vote yes, no, or abstain, please. We did get a, I better double-check on that. Did we get a second on six? Thank you. Please vote. And we will close the voting in 10 seconds. And the voting is closed, and the article has passed. Article seven is an easement for national grid on the town of Wenham property. I will entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of a portion of the town property located on Larch Row and described in a deed recorded with the Essex South Registry of Deeds in Book 6118, page 416, "from the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes to the Board of Selectmen for utility purposes and for the purpose of granting a utility easement in said portion," which portion is approximately shown on a plan entitled "National Grid Easement," and on file with the town clerk and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said easement on such terms and conditions as the Board deems appropriate. And the conservation has so moved, and I'll accept a second. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I guess there'll be some electricity in a new area of the town. If we could all vote then on your devices, vote now. And I'm reminded that this is a two-thirds vote because it has to do with the transfer of real property. And we'll close the vote in 10 seconds. The vote is closed. The article passes. The last two articles today, as the sun is coming out, are citizens petition. We've come to the first of those two citizens petitions. Both of these petitions were submitted to the town clerk and had the appropriate number of signatures certified. Both were presented in the warrant as submitted. After each motion has been made, I'll allow each petitioner to make a brief presentation. Town council has opined that any action under this article, the first citizens petition, in its current form is not binding. It's really, the vote will provide a sense of the meeting or a straw vote. The town would have to address this issue at another town meeting to authorize special legislation and perhaps approve a ballot question at an election in order to implement the goal of this petition. So I will entertain a motion that the So I will entertain a motion that the town vote to adopt the original form of municipal administration summarized as follows. According to the provisions of Chapter 43C of the General Laws providing for optional plans of municipal administration. The town of Wenham bylaws, Chapter 2, Paragraph 4, Line 1, current. The executive powers of the town of Wenham shall be vested in a three-member board of selectmen, elected for three-year rotating term, and the proposed change would be the executive powers of the town of Wenham shall be vested in a five-member board of selectmen, elected for three-year rotating terms.
So moved.
And do I hear a second? You've got the, you've got the, the mic.
I've got the mic. Friends, what does this mean? It's a one-word change in our bylaws, and the question is, should we move from a three-member board to a five-member board of selectmen, select board? But the real question before you is not to make the change, it's to gather information, to start a study group, to propose, to study whether or not this is a change that's good for Wenham. Again, this is non-binding. Why would we move to five? And the simple answer is good governance. More people at the table to make decisions affecting us all. At the October 6th Board of Selectmen's meeting, where the board was reorganized, Mr. Cheeseman was elected chair and clerk. Mr. Clemensy and Mr. Wilhelm were both elected vice chair. This is an odd lineup. Normally, we have a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk. The board, three positions, three members. The board gave several reasons why they went with this odd lineup, and those reasons fit very nicely into this question. So the board cited that there was a large workload. Many tasks took place outside their meetings, researching issues before they became agenda items. Five members would provide more hands, brains, and hours to conduct the necessary research. The second point that was made by the board was recruiting people to fill town boards and committees takes time and effort. And you heard early that we have 22 open positions. With three selectmen, you have three neighborhoods, you have three groups of friends to draw from. Five, you get a larger pool. We cast a wider net. We, five members would be in more neighborhoods, additional contacts, easier to fill positions. The third reason, and most important, for the two vice chairs was to make it easier to call a meeting if one member was away on business, vacation, or illness. With two vice chairs, it would be easier to call this meeting. Five members would make it easier to achieve quorum. With a three-member board, you need two members for a quorum. With a five-member board, you need three. Two members can be missing. I don't suggest a three-member, if you have a board of five, to go to three for an important meeting, but it is possible. You have quorum. To their three points, I would add, five members would allow the board to have two-member working groups to do necessary research on issues that come before the town. The two, the working groups could become subject matter experts and present their findings to the larger board. Five-member board would also make for better and more thoughtful discussion and debate at the select board meetings. More minds, more points of view, better debate. And our issues aren't getting any easier. We have many capable and willing people right here in this room, willing to serve. And again, this article is non-binding. A yes vote wouldn't force the town to do anything. A yes vote is an indication of interest in studying whether a five-member board is in our best interest. A yes vote would hopefully spur the creation of a government study group or charter commission to produce a report on the pros and the cons on such a change. A favorable report and acceptance by the Board of Selectmen would potentially send this question back to town meeting and/or the ballot for a binding decision. This vote is just the start of this process. Thank you.
Seeing none. Now, this is going to be a vote that is the sense of the town, and the way the electronic voting works, we'll be able, there'll be a bar at the top of the screen that will, will show us whether we have a majority or we don't have a majority. So with that having been said, please, let's see, we've got, did we get a second on this? So if you would all vote now, please, yes, no, or abstain. And I'm going to give folks a minute on this. And I'm going to close the vote in 15 seconds. And the voting is now closed. And because we have a green line on the top of the screen, the article, the straw vote has been voted for by a majority of those voting here today. Thank you. So the second citizens petition. Second citizens petition, as previously stated, this citizens petition was submitted to the town clerk, has the correct amount of certified signatures, was printed in the warrant book as submitted, and once the motion is made, I'll allow the petitioner to make a brief presentation. As with the prior Article One, understand that KP Law has opined that this petition in its current form is not binding, meaning that approval of this article would only provide the Board of Health with guidance as to the town meeting's position with respect to the opening and operation of local and regional schools during the school year. So now I would entertain a motion that the town provide a safe, I'm sorry, provide a sense of the meeting to the Board of Health and local and regional districts that a town meeting favors adherence to all guidance, metrics, rules, and instructions promulgated by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health concerning the opening and operation of schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during the 2021 school year, and for the duration of the state of emergency in the Commonwealth regarding the COVID-19 global pandemic and as further detailed in the warrant. And I believe it's Dan Pascarello who's going to present on this. And do I have a second? You've got the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Martyr. Good morning. My name's Dan Pascarello. I'm resident of Wenham, 17 Porter Street. I'm also a parent of a Hamilton-Wenham Regional High School student, and I've had two other daughters recently graduate through the school system. And I'm also a member of the planning board here in town. I want to open by thanking everybody who has helped us in supporting this citizens petition, not only in Wenham but in both towns. There's a sister petition moving forward in Hamilton as well. We've had more than 300 signatures in both towns from registered voters to push these petitions forward, more than 120 here in Wenham and 180 in Hamilton. It's clear that we have many parents and citizens who are concerned about getting our students back to school safely. And I particularly want to thank everybody who helped with gathering signatures for the petitions. There are many concerned moms and dads out there and citizens generally. So the purpose of this petition is, this is an opportunity for us to vote as citizens of the town, to speak and to be heard about how we should move forward with the operation of our schools this year. In response to surveys over the summer, parents overwhelmingly supported either in-person or hybrid learning models over remote learning. I believe it was 70 to 80% that was in favor. The state has issued guidance through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, and the Department of Health, DPH, for the safe, safe opening and operation of our schools. So I just want to note that we're not pushing this forward in a vacuum. There, there is guidance that is in place issued by the state. What prompted this petition was that we had an introduction of local metrics over the summer by the Joint Boards of Health that were more strict than the state requirements. So in short, we've introduced this petition to make clear that we do not want to make it harder than is necessary to keep our schools open this year. Just a little bit of background, because a lot has happened since we've introduced a petition, and there's been actually a lot of progress that's been constructive. On September 3rd, the school district announced in a press release that local COVID data forced the school system to open the school year with remote learning. So instead of opening in a hybrid model on September 14th, we were pushed into the red category and forced to downshift to fully remote. The reason that happened was because of the local metrics that were adopted. There was a change in the definition from the state guidelines that lowered the red category from 8 per 100,000 to 6 per 100,000, and there were a few other changes, including the fact that we didn't follow what's called the key municipality standard, which means for regional schools, you look to the town with the highest proportion of students. So in our case, it would have been Hamilton. What happened instead was, we looked at both towns. There was a spike in cases in Wenham due to Gordon College, which normally wouldn't have been included in our metrics. So this was news to a lot of people in town because at the time, under the state guidelines, both towns were either gray or green, and that's what set this process in motion. Briefly about what the state guidelines require. The state uses a 14-day period for rolling average of daily cases per 100,000 residents. DESI recommends that there be no movement in either direction, either going up or down, until there's a color change on the state map that you might be familiar with for three straight weeks. So with a 14-day average, that gives you a month of data. And the local metrics, and there's a handout if, if you have it, which I won't go into detail about what everything is in the local metrics, but those local metrics are set forth in a two-page chart. And under the local metrics, we were using a seven-day average, which is another reason why we quickly had to downgrade. So the, the local metrics are much stricter. As I said, there was a definition lower. The key municipality standard was rejected, and it also added several other standards that you can see on the chart. For example, there is a surrounding community standard that is incorporated in the local metrics, which is not in the state guidelines. So in addition to looking at Hamilton and Wenham, I believe we look at 12 to 14 other communities which can influence the decision. And in fact, recently, in the most recent chart from the state, which was issued on Wednesday, there have been zero cases in Hamilton and zero cases in Wenham over the last two weeks. However, there are several surrounding communities who have had a spike in cases. I believe Salem, Peabody, Gloucesters had a recent cluster, which would push us into downshifting if we were to follow the local metrics. So an update on what's happened since we brought forward the petitions. There was some confusion with this process between, I think, the Boards of Health and the school committee or the superintendent. This process started in the summer when the superintendent and school committee sought some guidance from the Boards of Health when there was less guidance from the state. The Boards of Health, after we brought these petitions, said that they intended this to be non-binding or, or not mandatory. However, the way that the, the guidance and the metrics were worded was in a mandatory fashion. So after these petitions were submitted, we've had a number of very productive meetings with both the superintendent, the Boards of Health, and other town officials. And in fact, on October 1 and October 7, both local Boards of Health voted to repeal their previous guidance from August and September and to restate that these are not binding, that they are optional for the school district. So we, why do we still have a vote? We're still on the petition here. We, we have all of the signatures that were certified, and as Mr. Fahry said, this will provide a sense of the town for the superintendent as she makes decisions going forward. So it's also important to note that with the exception of one small change that the Boards of Health made to their initial guidance when they restated it, they are still essentially the same. So we don't want there to be any lingering confusion out there for either the superintendent or the schools. We would like them to get a sense that we do want to open our schools safely and hopefully as, as soon as possible. So we're asking that you vote in favor of the article to make clear that the state guidance issued by DESI and DPH is sufficient. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Gentlemen in front here.
Good morning. Peter Walzick, Walzick Commons Belling, 112 Maple Street. I would encourage folks to vote no against this. I don't believe we should be delegating our decision-making power to a political body. Regarding the metric of the surrounding town, I believe it should be included because we do have staff and students who come from surrounding towns. We are, we are part of a larger community. We're not living in a bubble. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments, questions? Okay, so hearing none, we're ready to vote. And again, this is a sense of the meeting or a straw vote, and so here again, we will see whether there is a majority in favor or not, understanding that it is non-binding. It speaks only to the sense of the meeting. So please vote now on Article Nine. 10 seconds, and I will close the vote. And the vote is now closed. I want to be sure that I understand this. I'm looking at the green on top, and so there is a majority that have vote, of those voting yes or no, who have voted in favor, and that information is available now. So that concludes the last of the articles. If you could go to, I'm sorry, but, but so everybody can hear. Let's go back to the, did you want to announce the number?
Would you announce the number because the green is difficult to see?
I, I, it's difficult even up here. So can we put that back up on the screen? And be sure that we have the numbers up there. So we have 65, yes. 60, no. 13, abstain. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So we've come to the end of our business for today. I want to thank everybody for your participation, and the sun is out. I want to again say thank you to everybody who made this possible in terms of the tent and, and keeping us all safe. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to remind you that we're trying to leave by rows, and the ushers are going to help us leave by rows. You've all got devices? Please. Please leave the same way you came in to make sure you drop those devices off. They won't even turn the TV on or off, so it's just something that we want to be sure we have come May. And then-- And I just want to remind everybody to look at the town's website for updates on COVID-19, vacancies on town boards and committees, and any other information relating to town business. And the next annual town meeting will be held in May 2021, and the position of moderator will be available for people to apply for and be elected to. May I have a motion to adjourn this special town meeting? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Everybody, please be safe, stay well, and enjoy the rest of the weekend. God bless.